All right. Good morning, everybody. It is 9:00 a.m. on this October 18th, 2024. I called to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Burnett County Commissioners' Court. The regularly scheduled meeting would have been held on next Tuesday or this coming Tuesday. The Court had voted to move it to today based on some conflicts of schedules next week. So in calling the meeting to order in lieu of invocation, you know, it's a... We've lost another good one in Burnett County. For those that grew up around here, right across the street over here was... Used to be Burnett County Supply owned by the Withers family. And Pat Withers passed away recently and just fond memories of that establishment and going in and buying a pound of nails or whatnot. You'd write out your own ticket and just old, old school, great family. And Pat, just a great person that knew every aspect of it. And I just ask for a moment of silence on behalf of the Withers family and the loss The family thanks you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we've got all members of court present. So that would take us to item three, would be public comment. Again, according to the rules of decorum, anybody can get up and speak their mind for three minutes as allowed. And so please.
A point of inquiry before you start my time. Are we going to read in the part about being able to speak on the agenda items?
Ma'am, now what's your question?
The point of inquiry, are we allowed to speak on agenda items like that sentence that's in between the two three-minute sentences?
You can speak on anything you'd like.
During the...
And then there'll be an opportunity to speak before each agenda item.
During the agenda, not just public comments.
That's correct.
Thank you. My name's Patty Copeland, I'm a Burnett County voter, taxpayer, and interested person. I'm just going to enter into public comments. A notice that I mailed to the commissioners and the elections administrator having to do with ministerial duty on elections. It's that long email that has been going around for a few days. My second item is the Baker Tilly emails. The notice that was given to the Court on September 12th, 2023, when the Court was... The proposal was brought before the Court to go out for the audit. The only notice included mention of payroll irregularities and the potential of directing auditor to employ a forensics accounting firm to inspect and audit Burnett County payroll records. And then the auditor said, "Correct." Then the judge said, "In the name of transparency, making sure everything is correct, I feel it would be prudent to get an outside forensics auditing firm to take a look at some irregularities and talk with auditor." But there's no mention of... That's it. That's the notice. So fast forward to August 13th of 2024, where a motion was made by Commissioner Byerly to table the action on the presentation or the report from Baker Tilly. The motion was, "Is it appropriate to make a motion to table this until our next Commissioners' Court?" And then Commissioner Byerly said, "That's my motion." Commissioner Walz seconded it. Judge Oakley said, "The motion and second is to just table the item until the next court." Then you have a motion and a second, motion and a second, sir, and then the judge read into the record, "We have a motion and a second to table the item until a future court." So my public comment has to do with, this was supposed to be on the next agenda at the end of August, and somehow the motion was modified in court. And I would like to see this Baker Tilly report be taken off the table and presented in court. Additionally, on June 28th, 2024, Judge Oakley said that he's contacted seven or eight different organizations about the Baker Tilly audit, and I would like to PIR to contact the names, the dates. Commissioner Luther, here's a copy of the PIR. Thank you for everybody. I would like to PIR the contact, phone numbers, names, dates, et cetera. And that is by PIR. So thank you very much.
Right on time. Charlie Parker, voter and taxpayer. Mr. Oakley, you seem to have a little hearing problem, so I'm going to speak loud, but he said that everybody can hear me. All of you seated at the table work for all of the citizens who live in Burnett County. You were elected to serve the people. I would appreciate it if everyone on the Court would look at me when I'm talking to you, Mr. Dockery and Mr. Luther. On multiple occasions, Mr. Oakley has repeatedly violated the Burnett County Rules of Conduct and Decorum in the Texas Open Meetings Act. The recent actions to remove the previous meeting and department update agenda items from the meeting agendas by Mr. Oakley and the commissioners are blatant attempts to decrease transparency during the court meetings. These changes were made without any notice or discussion, a violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act. It is reprehensible that Mr. Oakley has made these changes in an effort to restrict the public's ability to participate in their government, and the commissioners have remained silent and allowed it to happen. This is unacceptable. This is a warning to all of you that you are steering this Court in the wrong direction and your employers are not happy with you. The taxpayers and voters of Burnett County deserve and demand an open book policy and honest in all government affairs, honesty from... Honesty in all government affairs from their elected civil servants. Mr. Oakley's rules of order parliamentary trick during the September 24th court meeting was shameful, childish, and very disrespectful to District Attorney Sonny McAfee, his wife, and the citizens present in the court that day. The fact that two of the commissioners went along with this stunt made the entire court look very foolish. District Attorney McAfee presented the truth and revealed in open court the facts regarding the sheriff's office mislabeling issue that Mr. Oakley has turned into a dumpster fire of lies and cover-ups. The email communications between Oakley and Baker Tilly revealed in the last court meeting proved that this entire fiasco was a twisted and determined effort to attack the sheriff and the Burnett County Sheriff's Department. Mr. Oakley's ridiculous behavior to cover up this mess has been recorded on YouTube for all to see. The Court's decision to frivolously waste over $21,000 for the Baker Tilly report is a sad and expensive joke that has been played on Burnett County taxpayers. My resolve to stand up in defiance against you, Mr. Oakley, has been hardened, and I consider my previous removal from this courtroom a badge of honor. I will adamantly object to your shameful behavior each and every time that I see fit to do so. Mr. Oakley, your personal behavior has proven that you are unfit for the job as Burnett County judge. Your lies and corruption are documented in the public record.
Thank you.
You should resign.
Thank you for your opinions.
Good morning. Claire Nibro, Burnett County voter, taxpayer, interested person. I have this for the county clerk. Thank you, Mr. Luther. The definition of transparency is openness, communication, and accountability, or the general's... The general public's ability to monitor and examine, or another definition, government's obligation to share information with citizens that is needed to make informed decisions and hold officials accountable for the conduct of the people's business. A definition of unbiased, showing no prejudice for or against something, impartial, based solely on evidence and facts. The definition of bias, the predisposition of a judge, arbiter, arbitrator, or anyone making a decision against or in favor of. Examples of bias and not being transparent regarding the Baker Tilly audit. Number one, instructing the auditor and Baker Tilly to remove from the report rhetoric from the sheriff and the chief deputy. Number two, instructing that, quote, "The report should not include perceptions of an investigation by the DA," close quote. Number three, suggesting adding, quote, "A one-sentence response recommending a criminal investigation," close quote. Number four, why is the background provided, quote, "For perception only and not for reproduction," close quote. And in another area, quote, "This information is not to be included in the report," close quote, question mark. Number six, on June 13th, 2024, Judge Oakley provided Baker Tilly information in his email that was not supported by evidence. In the email, he stated to Baker Tilly, quote, "The DA seemingly will not investigate," unquote. We all know now that the DA did investigate, and his report is dated June 10th, 2024. Number eight, quote, "The draft we received contains nonpertinent information." Was that information nonpertinent, or was it not convincing? Number nine, "The draft makes mention of the separation of the then HR director. That does not need to be included." Why? It makes sense why Mrs. Luther was interviewed. It does not make sense why Mrs. Luther was included after her removal from her position due to nepotism. She was included in emails and phone calls. Three other commissioners were not. Number 10, "Why did Judge Oakley want Baker Tilly..." "Why didn't Judge Oakley want Baker Tilly to attend Commissioners' Court and be subjected to public questions?" Quote, unquote. You... Judge Oakley previously stressed the importance of a representative to present findings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other public comment? All right. All right. Well, item four, on a lighter note, where are we? Mr. Miller, we have a presentation from the Capital Area Council of Governments. Chris Miller is the new executive director of CAPCOG, following Ms. Betty, who's been there for 28 years. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Betty Boyt.
She's still there.
Yeah, she's still there. She's handing the baton off. And CAPCOG represents... How many counties? Ten?
Ten, yes, sir.
So all counties in the state belong to a COG, and... Which is a council of governments. And it's a... I'll let you take over.
Well, thank you, Judge. And I also have with me, because this is our kind of our dog and pony show a little bit, we have Jen, Jennifer Scott, who's the director of our agent, and she was going to also provide a little brief information. I'm going to just hand out... This is just a brochure. It's... And I think most of you all know about Warren, Central Texas, and Martin Ritchie would be here, too. But I just want to just kind of point out all... Kind of do a little brief intro and just remind you all about what we do and then answer any questions. Obviously, we have the benefit of Commissioner Dockery is also on our board, and I think he and I, he may be able to do a... We're doing a conference call at ten if everything works well for him. The nominating committee. So anyway, it's a pleasure to be here. But yes, we are a multi-county operation, as you indicated. We serve 10 counties, Burnett one of them, and then nine others. We go as far east as Fayette County, if you know, obviously, where that is. And then we go... Our farthest west is your neighbor, Lano County. So... And we then obviously have the I-35 corridor, which is, you know, the greater Austin area, Williamson, Travis County, and Hayes County. But we provide a number of really what we think are very important services, and you'll hear a little bit more from Jennifer Scott here about our aging program. But, you know, we do homeland security. You all know Martin Ritchie, you know, who works with your EMS coordinators and provides those kind of access to transfer... To the kind of funding that they provide. We have regional planning and services, and that's going to be Charles Simone, who is the director, and they deal with like air quality issues and things like that, which I know that's always a big issue here with the quarries. And then we have agent services, as I indicated, emergency communication, which is the 911 district, and that's Richard Morales as our director. And then we have the Regional Law Enforcement Academy. And I do have a... I do have a couple of cards of Tonia Domingo, who is the office coordinator for the academy. David Bertling, who was a... He's a retired deputy from Williamson County, but I believe he does actually live in Burnett County. He is our director, and we're always looking for opportunities to train law enforcement personnel from the cities and the sheriff's departments. So... But, you know, I'm new, and I've had the pleasure of following Ms. Boyt, who's been there for 28 years, built up a heck of an organization, and had... She's obviously benefited from the leadership that we've gotten from our county participants. I know Judge Oakley was one of our past chairs, and I don't know if you're going off or are you going to continue to stay on, or I don't know what the way it is, but you have been very much a contributor and a leader on the CAPCOG board, and I know that you have a number of other committees and other assignments that you do. But we are... You know, it's a new day, and I'm fortunate to be able to jump into her shoes, and I think that, you know, I couldn't have asked for a better opportunity because, you know, there's a, you know, great foundation. And what I want to do is really try to reach out to our member governments and move in different directions, because I think the next 10 to 15 years for Central Texas and the capital area are going to be, you know, kind of continue to be dynamic but also challenging as we deal with growth and we deal with water issues and we deal with transportation issues and how do we coordinate all that. And I think all the social service issues that Jen can talk about, you know, will... Are very much big things that are going to impact us. So...
Well, we're lucky to have you. You came to us with quite a resume of not only COG experience in other parts of the nation, but also county administration as well. So I think you've got to... Gentlemen, is there any questions or comments?
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, well, let me let Jennifer Scott come up, and just she can tell you about some of the programs. And as you know, that the senior, we call it the AAA and the... It's the Area Agency on Aging, but there's also the Aging and Disability Resource Council. And so they touch the lives of citizens, and sometimes it's a more direct relationship that they have with citizens than they maybe have with the actual county government or with the city government. And so a lot of times, you'll hear about the needs of your constituents, and we're here to help, and everybody has elderly parents, everybody may be touched on somebody that may have a disability or is in need of those kind of assistance. So that's why we have great people like Jennifer. So I'll sit down, let an expert take over.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jennifer Scott, and I'm the director of the Area Agency on Aging and the Aging and Disability Resource Center through... Which is a division of CAPCOG, of the Capital Area Council of Governments. And what our mission is, is we advocate for and support for the health and safety and well-being of adults 60 and older. And then through the Aging and Disability Resource Center, which is a department within the Aging Division, they help families navigate long-term services and supports through HHS. But, and I brought some flyers for y'all that describe all of our services that we provide through the Area Agency on Aging. And we do quite a bit of services in Burnett County, so I wanted to bring some statistics at how much we have helped the seniors within Burnett County. And we are one of the largest funders of home-delivered meals and congregate meals for seniors that are homebound and at risk for food insecurity. And we provided in home-delivered meals through a local contractor here in Burnett County. We provided over 38,252 meals just in fiscal year '24, which went from August 1st through September 30th of 2024. And we also provided in-home respite. Many times, folks that live out in the more rural counties have a very difficult time finding respite for the caregivers so that they can take a break and get some rest, because caregiving is very, very hard, and it never ends. And we provided 12 different people in Burnett County with respite to the tune of $38,695. We also provided health maintenance, emergency response. We've done congregate meals and caregiver support hours. So in total, the dollar amount that we've assisted the folks that live in Burnett County in fiscal year 2024 comes out to $389,901.13. There's no way that I can describe all the services, because we provide so many through my... Through my agency and the Area Agency on Aging, but from income support to in-home respite to residential repair, we've helped people build ramps so that they can exit and safely out of their house. We also have the Ombudsman Program, which are specially trained advocates that go and advocate for people that live in assisted livings and nursing homes, for folks that don't have a family member or they're unhappy with the services, those kind of things. And you actually have nine different facilities in Burnett County. There are six assisted livings and three nursing homes, and my ombudsmen have made 35 different visits in 2024 to advocate for the residents that live in the facilities here in Burnett County. And so we do a lot of different services. We have information and referral, which is... We have two different call lines where people can call in and ask questions and kind of how to navigate. And we've taken over 6,000 calls in 2024, but what's interesting is there's only about 100 of those 6,000 that came from the constituents that live in Burnett County. We would love to help more people in Burnett County. That's why I'm here, to kind of spread the word at what we can provide and how we can assist. And it's for people over 60 and their caregivers, and it is at no cost to them. We are funded through the Older Americans Act of 1965, which was signed by President LBJ and as reauthorized in 2000. So we would love to continue to help the constituents and people that live in Burnett County. I brought some additional flyers that I can leave for folks, and I'm open for any questions you might have.
Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me this morning.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Unless there's no special request, I'll just go down the agenda I printed. Five, we have a presentation from Marble Falls ISD Superintendent, Mr. Jeff Gasaway, concerning the voter-approved tax rate election.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank y'all for having me. I'm Jeff Gasaway, Superintendent, Marble Falls ISD. Bill Orr, my CFO, joined me. I'm going to just try to quickly walk through our voter-approved tax rate election. I am going to say a couple of things. When I get to that part, I'm going to be very just educational. I don't get to advocate, I just get to educate. But I want to let you know about a couple of things before I start that, about some of the good things going on. When I took this job a year and a half ago, I talked about I want Marble Falls ISD to be a district of destination. People have choices nowadays. They can go to a variety of different schools, public, private, homeschool. I want us to be a lighthouse in the hill country. And so we're doing a lot of great things, I think, and one of those things is our vision statement talks about Marble Falls ISD has an unyielding commitment to love every child and inspire them to achieve their fullest potential. So as we hire people, we're talking about that love and inspiration, that lifelong investment in our kids. And so that's our enrollment right now, 4,008 as of last Friday. One, two things I want to tell you about that's exciting before we talk about our voter-approved tax rate election is we have gone on in our high school where every single student with this year's freshman class could, if they want to, could walk out with an associate's degree. We've started early college high school. We have 88 students, and I think y'all can recognize the life-changing opportunity for some of our kids that have never gone to college to be able to walk out with an associate's degree. And so we're really excited about that. And then for our teachers, one of the things, we're doing teacher incentive allotment, and that's where salary dollars are being allocated, from 6,000 up to over $20,000 that teachers will have access to, depending on how well they do on their evaluation, as well as how well their students do on state testing. And so some of the exciting things going on, but here today, what I'm here to talk about is our school funding election. It's called a Vader, a voter-approved tax rate election. And a little bit about it, it's when any time a school district calls an elect... Or tries to raise their tax rate above what the state allows. And so whether it's half a penny, a penny, in this case, it's 2.67 pennies, that the voters get to have a hand in that choice. And so it impacts the funding that's available for our students, our staff, and our programs. How did we get here? So when we started building our budget this last spring, we were looking at a $4 million budget deficit. And so some of the things that led to that, one, and y'all know this, if you go to the store and buy a gallon of milk, a carton of eggs, a loaf of bread, from 2019, 2020 to right now, it has gone up 19 and a half percent. And another factor in that is that the state of Texas had a record surplus, but school districts did not get any new funding on the last legislative cycle. There were bills that tied educational savings accounts or vouchers to school funding, and no bill passed. And so schools did not get an increase in their school funding and the basic allotment, and there's no built-in inflation index within that. Marble Falls ISD has been trying to keep up with being competitive with our... All the school districts around us and the cost of living, and so every year, we've been trying to give somewhere between a 2% and 4% raise. And then our child nutrition, we have every child eat for free in Marble Falls ISD, whether you... No matter what salary income you are at, every kid gets to eat for free, and all of those things led to a $4 million deficit. We addressed that by cutting some positions. We cut 11 different positions at a variety of different campuses, from central office all the way down to our elementaries. We also reduced budgets. That saved us almost $1 million, but that's still left a huge gap. A little bit more about inflation, and y'all know this as well. Cost of electricity, water have been going up. Gas prices, they go up and they go down, and it just... It can hurt when you're a school that has 280 square miles. That's a lot of buses driving kids all over the place, and the cost of gas is hurting. Our insurance premiums, health insurance have been going up dramatically, as well as our property insurance. Our property insurance, when I took over... Our property insurance, when I took over as an assistant soup in 2016, it was $160,000. It's $800,000 today, and there's no built-in inflation index within our school funding. So a little bit about school funding real quickly, and y'all probably know this, most of our school funding comes from our taxpayers. 86%, 72% from our homeowners, 14% from our businesses, we get 9% from the state, and we get an additional 5% in Marble Falls ISD from the federal government and title funds. If we have, if we don't get enough from our local property taxes, we'll get more help from the state, but we actually get more. We have to give back $14.5 million in what's known as recapture or Robin Hood. That actually is down due to recent homestead exemptions, where we were giving over $20 million back to the state, and so now it's 14 and a half. How do we apply those? Most people, when they see their tax bill, they're seeing one number, they don't realize it's two buckets of money, our MNO and our INS. Our MNO pays for our maintenance and operation, it stands for maintenance and operation, pays for our salaries, our benefits, our school supplies, copier machines, dry erase boards, transportation utilities. The INS, that's our bond. 2018, we had a bond, we redid the front of the high school, Colt Elementary, those things, the INS, entrances and sinking, new construction, facility upgrades, furniture purchases, things like that. It's like a home loan. On the MNO side, how do we spend that? Majority of our funds go to teacher salaries and benefits. For Marble Falls, it's 83%. Most school districts in the state of Texas, it's somewhere between 80% to 85%. The rest goes to our campus budgets. That includes athletics, fine arts, CTE. All the different campuses are covered in that 17%. This is hard to see, it just breaks down all the different budgets in the area. Draw your attention to the second one, recapture, that's that Robin Hood payment. 20% of our budget is going back to the state. So the current tax rate is 89 cents, 67 on the MNO side, 22 on the INS, and that's for every $100 of property is assessed. Here is where we sit right now. It shows two different figures with Marble Falls. The lower one is where are we sitting today, at 88.78, and then the proposed rate increasing by 2.67 pennies at that 91.45 increase on the MNO side. A little bit about our history on the tax rates. In 20, it had been pretty steady from 2014 to 2018. We dropped one penny on the INS side in 2018, and then the MNO rate's been going down as the state's been working on decreasing property taxes. And so for schools, this is how we're funded. I don't have a statement on how they're funded, it's just, this is how we're funding. The rate's been going down, it's gone down by over 30% over the last few years. And even with the 2.6 increase, it would still be 36 cents lower than it was in 2018. So if the VADER, what happens in the VADER? If the VADER passes, it increases the rate to 69.92, and more funding becomes available, and we're able to keep all of our programs funded, our classrooms where they are, and we're going to consider some compensation for teachers and staff. If the VADER does not get approved, then the tax rate stays at that lower rate, and we're going to have some serious decisions to make as far as class size increases, programs reductions and eliminations, from all of our extracurriculars to GT, fine arts, athletics, CTE, and then do we have some other staff reductions, all in an effort to try to have a balanced budget. I already mentioned, 2.67 pennies is for per $100 value, it gets it to 91 cents. An average home price in Marble Falls is $400,000 roughly, and so it equates to $8.90 per month that that will be the difference. And every dollar stays in Marble Falls ISD. None of these dollars are subject to recapture. It generates $2.2 million. Again, none of it going back to the state. I mentioned that a couple of times because the next slide hits on, if my clicker will work, there it is. These are some districts that have done it. Liberty Hill did it, or is doing it this year. Lago Vista did it last year. I'm going to come back to Austin in a second. Leander, Round Rock, Flugerville, Lake Travis, they've all done it in the last couple of years. It's a mechanism that schools are using to try to generate some more funds in these difficult budget times. Austin ISD is one that's really interesting that I just wanted to highlight, to go back to my previous comment about all staying in Marble Falls. They're going after 9.1 pennies, but those pennies that they're going after are subject to recapture. They're going to get $170 million, but they're only going to get to keep $40 million. They're going to give back $130 million to the state in recapture with what they're going to generate if their VADER passes. For us, Marble Falls, $2.2 million, all of it stays in Marble Falls ISD. Uh-oh, I hit the wrong bit. I hope everybody in the room is registered to vote. If you've not, if you're not, you missed it. But early voting begins on Monday. One of the biggest things as a former social studies teacher that I believe is that educated voters are the best voters. We are given a God-given gift of being able to go vote on all the different issues that come before us, and so I hope people are educated. I hope this presentation has helped educate you. If you want more information, early voting's the 21st through November 1st, and then Election Day is November 5th. We have a website, if you go to our main district website, marblefallsisd.org or dot com, you'll be able to find a school funding election, and that will take you to loveinspireachieve.com, and it will give you more information where you can watch a video about it, you can see more information about it, just to become educated on this issue. And so with that, I would entertain any questions y'all might have.
Very great presentation, and it's educational to me. I did not realize that an election to increase that, that exempted those funds from the Robin Hood. That's a very interesting component of that.
The state of Texas, they have different types of pennies that are, some are subject to recapture, some are not. We're going after the golden pennies. Right now, there's eight golden pennies that schools can go after. We have 5.33 of those golden pennies that are already built into our formula. This will be getting us to those eight that are not subject to recapture. Austin ISD, they're going after their copper pennies. Those are subject to recapture.
I feel like we're talking about Bitcoins or something.
Yeah, a little bit.
Gentlemen.
Great presentation. Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Supervisor.
Sure.
Okay. The security for these schools, is that paid for out of school letting or by municipal like law enforcement?
So that's a great question. We pay for our SROs out of our MNO side. If we're doing things that would be related to facility upgrades, like if we were adding more cameras, if we were to do a bond like we did the last, in 2018, we had money dedicated to do safety and security, but the school resource officers are paid out of the MNO side. We do get a little bit of funding from the state, $15,000 per school, but it does not equate to what an SRO is actually valued at. It's one of those that we just, we got some, but we didn't get enough, but we're required to have an armed officer at every single one of our campuses, so.
Is that paid for out of school?
Yes, out of the MNO. Yes, sir.
And the second question is that the salary increase, the salary increases that you recently had, was that in the newspaper recently? Is that a small mail?
We, Bill, was it in the newspaper? I don't know.
We had a public hearing on that.
Yeah. We've, it was a 1% raise that was passed in May, and with the ability to come back at a later date.
Well, the interesting word you used was required to have an officer there, and so it's a state mandate, but it doesn't come with funding.
That's right.
And so that's what we face all the time.
Yes, sir.
Here.
For sure.
So you briefly mentioned, alluded to on the new $100,000 exemption for homesteads on school taxes, and that's made a major impact.
Yes, sir.
And that's, there's a push for that, to have counties have that ability to pass that as well. And so it protects people's homestead, you know, so they're not taxed out of their homes.
Right, absolutely.
Just again, a great presentation. Mr. Parker, did you have a question?
Yeah. How many administrators, people in that classification, are on the Marble Falls Independent School District?
How many total administrators?
Administrator.
Oh, man, I would have to, we've got at least two principal, assistant principal at every single school, and then our district office has, I would have to, I would give you my card, and you can email me, and I'll give you a specific answer on that.
And principals and vice principals that are at the school?
They are.
I should have clarified my question. Administrators that are outside of the actual school?
I can get you a specific number on that.
Do you know what their, the average salary is, or what the role of administrator?
I can get that for you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Well, I have one more right here.
Yes, sir.
Green Ohio. I'm a Verde County resident, rancher, director-elect of the Central Texas Groundwater Conservation District. Apparently, I'm asking if your teachers have the right to have a Bible in their classrooms?
Well, I will tell you, that's not part of this conversation, but there is nothing that prohibits them from having a Bible in their classroom.
Well, they're allowed to have a Bible.
Yes, sir.
I've got four children. One graduated semicom lot from A&amp;M, one at seven, two are in trades, one's a library, and none of them went to government schools. So I hope you understand why some of us are reluctant to pay your taxes. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate you coming forward. Great presentation, and hopefully gains understanding. Now, Verde ISD's not doing one of these.
I think they did, or they've done some golden penny stuff before, I remember when they passed it.
Commissioner Luth, of course, served on the school board. Very complex, it's a huge, it's a huge role play that the schools play, and, you know, very complicated in the funding and the requirements and, you know, Godspeed to you, sir.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a great day.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Okay. I would now go to item six, which would be discussion or action regarding the approval of the monthly treasure report for September 2024. Good morning, Ms. Crownover.
Good morning. Happy Friday.
Happy Friday.
Yeah, Football Friday. Okay, so one report for you to close out FY '24. September 2024, we had a beginning cash and investments balance of $58,901,935.99. We received $6,906,000, I'm sorry, $6,906,614.58. Interest earnings for September were $263,442.44. Dispersing $3,468,486.52, leaving us with a month-ending cash and investments balance We did receive donations to vet rides for $1,279.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions, comments?
Move for acceptance.
Second. We have a motion of acceptance, motion of second to accept the report. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Five oh. All right. And while you're up here, I'll kind of keep you at the mic, because this is one of the things that you brought to us our attention. And this would be seven, would be discussion or action regarding a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for our veterans. And I'm going to give you credit for bringing this up and reminding me that we had this opportunity again, and we have before us resolutions or anything. Let me read into the resolution right quick. Says, "Whereas the residents of Burnett County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selflessly served our county and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed services have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Burnett County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members across access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas Burnett County appreciates the sacrifices of United States military personnel, believes a specific recognition should be granted, therefore be resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans County. Burnett County hereby declares October 9, 2024, through Veterans Day, November the 11th, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service and therefore be further resolved in observance of Operation Green Light. Burnett County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through the 11th. Gentlemen, might there be a motion? Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion in second. Before we vote, Ms. Crownover, would you like to add anything to that?
Sure.
Well, you brought it forward to us and reminded we did it last year, and it just is good.
I brought it last year, and then we kind of just ran out of time with the way that the court dates fell. This is, Operation Green Light is a NACO section event, and it just gives Burnett County a way to show that we care, and that we honor our veterans, that we love our veterans. So it's just a little bit more of appreciation and a way for us to show our appreciation to them. And it's nationwide, so for Burnett County to show those green lights, and I highly encourage all members of the community to do the same, so.
Yeah, and so in anticipation of the passage of this, I know the maintenance department has got plans to make the lights out in front of the courthouse, the kind of phone booth-looking lights, those will be green, and then the ones over at the historic jail, the uplights will be turned green, and, you know, not that it affects those fixtures, but with today's technology, with LED lighting, the green bulbs are readily available and cheap, and a lot of times the bulbs now, you can choose what color you want them to be. But I think it's an easy way to show honor to our veterans. Gentlemen, any comments?
I think it's great.
Absolutely.
All right. So with that being said, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We've got this. Yep, that's the right thing to do right there. Okay. Eight would be acknowledged for receipt. This is acceptance of reports of county officials as required by local government code, previously examined by the county auditor, and B, an updated employee handbook from the 10-8 Commissioners' Court Meeting. So that's not a action item, it's just the court acknowledging receipt of those items.
Judge, I have a question on 8A. There's no link, there's no documents attached in the link, and so my question is, if we have not been able to see what county officials' reports were provided to the court, has the court and all the commissioners read the reports that you're moving to accept today? I'm on the agenda item, so it's okay to answer the question. Have you read, have all the commissioners read the reports that are being accepted today?
I have not.
Okay. Have you?
I don't know what's been turned in. Be part of the minutes.
Okay, so if we don't know what's been turned in, why are we voting? Why are we accepting it?
It's required by local government code.
It's not required to accept something you haven't read.
I don't want to get into a debate with you, ma'am.
Okay, that's my, that's my comment. Thank you.
The reports are in the minutes, correct? They will be.
Yeah, this has been on the agendas since I started doing this back in January of 1999. It's always been an item to accept local government reports as required by the local government code. It is the responsibility of elected officials, each elected official, to submit reports that are required by statute for their particular office.
Okay, so we're still on the agenda item. So my comment to that is, the reports in the past, if you look at the minutes, you will see the reports are attached to the minutes. But disclosure is required, that's why we're here, for all five of you to... For all five of you to, to accept the reports that are being presented, be aware of what the contents are, and then accept them.
All right, Chief.
Just, this is regarding the, on this topic, the personal policies and employee handbook.
Personnel policy?
Personnel policies on page 45. I think there was a, a increase to $63 for the mills that was discussed.
We voted on it last meeting and I don't remember the exact number.
Sixty, sixty-three dollars.
It tied into an indicator. The auditor said that there's a federal guideline that is used to establish those numbers.
And the, and the new policy was included in the agenda? Correct?
I believe so.
On page 45, if that's correct, on 11.04 for mills, at the bottom it says $63, but at the top it still says $50.
Could be an error. We'll just need to get with the, I don't see her in here, but we need to get with human resources. And Cindy, could you help us remember to take a look at that? If there's, there's a human error, there's a human error.
No, I'm just drawing that, I'm wanting to make sure if y'all were going to, that these were official, that that definitely got changed before the, they became official.
Yep, absolutely.
We're still on agenda item 8A, correct?
That's correct.
All right, I have a comment on that. I just think I heard on the record, Mr. Luther and Mr. Wall saying they had not read any of this. This is why deliberation is needed amongst all five of you so that we can hear what you're talking about, so that you all know what you're doing. This is all done in, in secret and you people have not even read it. Two of you admitted it. Do you understand our concern?
Here, here.
We're, you're supposed to deliberate and we're supposed to watch that. You guys just rubber stamp stuff and I object.
I would say, I would say that this is not a action item. The court just accepts the reports that are required by statute of the elected official to submit.
Nevertheless, my objection stands.
Okay. All right, that would bring us to item nine, which would be discussion or action regarding contracts, agreements, or grants to be approved under ratified. A would be approval to apply for the Texas State Library Archives Commission Family Place Grant for equipment supplies for the children's library area and parent-child workshop. Consultant fees for medical, written kind of odd consultant, I guess it includes consultant fees for medical. Community Resource Center, WIC, CHIP, ECI, and Children's Counselors and Behavior Specialists for the parent-child workshops and travel to Cedar Park for the required TSLAC training on the Family Place Library. B would be approval of the interlocal agreement with the city of Bertram for a part-time library employee. C would be acknowledgement of the executed contract for County Road 114 paving project with Asphalt Inc. LLC doing business as Lone Star Paving Company. D would be approval to apply and sign the resolution for the FY 2025 Formula Grant for Indigent Defense Grant Program in Texas Indigent Defense Commission. All right. Is there, Cindy, we're all good? That's what's on the agenda. Is there a motion on any or all, or questions on any or all of the items within item nine?
I have a question on 9C. In the last couple of meetings, there's been quite a bit of Asphalt Inc. money spent, but it looks like we're doing things after contracts have been executed. I don't really understand road and bridge. I've asked to have some information provided to the public in court about road and bridge plans and contracts. And this one was kind of, one of them was submitted on the record under contracts and one was done under consent agenda, I think. And so I'm trying to figure out what's the difference. We had County Road 114, about $400,000, and we had County Road 4 something?
20.
420, thank you. And that was another half a million dollars. So just a comment, maybe this could be pulled out and voted on separately since it seems to be done acknowledgement of the executed contract. So this was already approved by the court?
County Road 114 has been approved by the court. This is the acknowledgement that we have received the contract back, isn't that correct? So it's already gone through all of the steps. This is the final step.
It's really unclear. Okay.
We already voted to approve the contract. Now they signed it, so now we're acknowledging receipt of the executed contract.
When you voted to approve the contract, was it on the agenda that it was with Asphalt Inc. LLC?
They were awarded the bid.
Yes, they were, they were awarded the bid.
Okay, so that's been real clear. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Is it, is it Asphalt LLC Incorporated LLC? Is it that the company that's doing the rock crusher plant out here on 3509?
It is the parent company.
It is the parent company.
It is the parent company. They were the low bidder.
So I, I mean, I see kind of a conflict there between contracts with the county and, and the fact that you guys did a declaration or, you know, a statement against that rock crushing plant.
That would be a question for the county attorney. I don't see if it was the low bidder.
It's a low bid. All right, so is any other questions, comments, or motions on item nine?
I do. On the interlocal with the city of Bertram, so the city's gonna pay part of this for the part-time library employee?
They are, it's the, that's their participation in the library is that they're providing a part-time employee. I don't know the number of hours. I don't have the specifics about it. But that's part of their participation towards the county library system is providing a part-time employee. And we have to recognize that in court as.
So we're actually not out any money when it comes in? It's, the city's actually.
That's correct. They're paying. All right. Is that correct, Cindy? We're all. Okay. Yeah, all right.
It's a, it is a county employee.
Oh, there you are.
Sorry. It is a county employee, but it's, the city is contributing to that county employee. Sorry, I used my, I thought it was loud enough. It's a county employee that we have hired, but the city is providing funds to increase the hours so that we can stay open more, do more programs, et cetera. So it's the city's contribution, since we are in city limits as well.
Right, each library does, each city does different things to support the library. Marble Falls provides the building. Burnet does pay some utilities and give some funds to go towards that. It's not standardized across the board.
Exactly.
But the cities do participate in, you know, in the facilities that are within their boundaries.
Exactly. Our patrons are county and city and even sometimes outside county and city, so this is their way to help.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay.
Okay. Gentlemen, is there any more questions or a motion on item nine?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ten, discussion or action concerning calling for bids, bid openings, request for proposals, qualifications, related openings. I know that we're set for the, the date on the construction of this, the annex expansion. Those were due, they are due on the 29th of October, is that right? Yeah. And that's the only bid I'm aware of that's outstanding.
There's some striping and paving.
Oh, striping and paving?
There are advertisements.
Okay. Is there, gentlemen, is there any items that need to go out to bid that you're aware of or anything?
We've had some, some people talking about some that not, they're not ready to go yet.
Okay.
We'll have some coming.
Yeah, we've got the basement repair. We're gonna need to do some, some window work around the courthouse as well, so. But it's just not ready yet.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
About the, the cost of the asphalt, quotes on asphalt. Have we got those back yet?
Those are due on the 29th.
29th.
Okay. Okay, so no action on 10. 11 would be the following. Items are part of the consent agenda and require no deliberation by the Commissioners' Court. Any item on this agenda may be considered separately. A would be consideration approval concerning budget, interdepartmental line item transfers. B would be consideration approval concerning budget amendments. C would be consideration authorization of payment of claims previously approved by the county auditor. And D would be consideration approval regarding departmental equipment requests for property transfers. Gentlemen, is there any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for approval, approval of the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in second, but it looks like we have a question?
Yes, sir. Voter, taxpayer, and interested person, I would like to know what's in the consent agenda. And last, at the last meeting, there was a statement made to Ms. Juanita that there's a statute that allows the consent agenda to be part of Burnet County Commissioners' Court. And I don't see the statute listed on the agenda. I'd like to see that statute on there because I can't find one. And I know that, I don't believe in my research that I have found where the court has actually adopted a consent agenda. It just sort of started happening. And so I'd like to open that up and see what's in it today. Is there anything in the consent agenda?
It's what's listed on the posting.
Okay, how many pages are in the consent agenda? Does anybody know?
I don't know the amount. I know for interdepartmental line items, I saw two.
Three.
Three.
Were these linked on, are there links?
Precinct three, road and bridge, line item transfers, I believe.
I didn't have anything in there, so.
I didn't see any budget, budget amendments. And then the claims are the bills that we pay in our payroll.
Payroll? Bills that we pay. Those are taxpayer, those are wide open to taxpayers. Why, is there anything in the consent agenda on that?
You have that in your folder?
Yeah, I have it in your folder.
Payroll approval. Here's the claims. It's all part of the agenda.
Now, these get emailed out to us.
They get emailed?
Yes.
Okay.
They get emailed. There's pages and pages of claims.
So all of the commissioners.
Bills to be paid, everything.
All the commissioners have read what's attached.
We always get it.
Okay, so can we see it before the meeting so we can look at it and ask questions? Or do, because if you voted on it and we have a question about it, it's too late at the next meeting. And tax says, Texas Association of Counties says, under the, under a consent agenda, agenda items included on it will be voted upon in one vote and will not be discussed separately unless requested by a citizen or court member. So that's my request. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Memory service. We have a motion in second on the table. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Calendar review is, would include reminder that tomorrow morning, hopefully it's as cool and nice as it was this morning, is the HHW event out at the recycle facility out on 963. That's from 9:00 to 1:00. Anybody'd like to volunteer with that, please show up at 8:00 for a safety meeting. Mr. Doctor, anything more on that event?
No, just if, I think they're gonna have some light breakfast type of items and then we'll have, we'll be able to feed our volunteers pizza at lunch. So I think that most of the cities are gonna be bringing volunteers or employee, their employees as volunteers to, to help us in this collection event, so. Any member of the public is more than welcome to come. If you've got a safety vest, please bring that with you.
Okay, well, kudos to you for yet again coordinating this twice a year event. And it's of great value to the public to be able to bring in items that need to be discarded properly. And some of it goes into recycling, which is obviously a good thing as well.
We do have a grant for this event.
I'm sorry?
We have a grant for this event?
Yeah, we do. And LCRA, I believe, makes a contribution as well.
I don't know if they have this year or not.
This year, they normally do.
The water conservation district makes a big contribution.
Yep, y'all sure do. Yep, very good. It's keeping our water safe and keeping chemicals out of our groundwater.
Protection for both surface and groundwater.
Yeah. Okay. So just going down the list, of course, election day is on November 5th. November 11th is Veterans Day, which would be an observed county holiday. November 28th and 29th are observed Thanksgiving holidays. Our next Commissioners' Court, or not our next Commissioners' Court, but our, the next Commissioners' Court will be on November the 12th. And, and then also on November 26th, we didn't move the one before Thanksgiving, I don't believe. Correct?
Correct.
And then December.
Where'd we move that one to again? I'm sorry.
We did move it.
We did not move.
We haven't moved it.
The one before Thanksgiving, we did not move. The one before Christmas, we did. That one.
It's moved to the 19th.
It's been moved from the 24th, which had been Christmas Eve, which probably wouldn't have been popular. But, so the December meetings will be December the 10th as well as the 19th, Thursday the 19th, with the 24th and 25th being recognized holidays. So that's what I've got on my calendar. Do y'all have anything else you'd like to promote? Anything? Anybody? Any events coming up?
Next Saturday, I think they still have tickets and tables for rifles, racks, and deer tracks for the advocacy center.
Okay, so.
I did have one.
Yes.
We can go back three minutes. I want to say thank you to the Burnet County Sheriff's Office, Paul Kowalik, Constable Leslie Ray, Precinct Four helped us with an abatement at 208 Deer Springs. It went real well. I got a lot of happy, happy folks out there with that cleanup, but we appreciate all the help. Thank you.
I'm glad to say, close on the agenda at 11:00 this morning, we'll be doing a dedication ceremony for a plaque here out by the clock on the south side of the courthouse for a brass plaque that was donated, recognizing that what's known as the Alamo Letter that Lieutenant Colonel Travis wrote from the Alamo, seeking help and the famous victory or death line. So that'll be down there at 11:00. So, all right, unless there's any other items, that's everything on the agenda. Everything, everything. We adjourn the meeting at 10:07.